The man you can trust, like Carlos Casco said, he told every department to cut down a certain percent, and he's not gonna raise any taxes. Why? Why cannot that be done to this, to this big organization?
We've done that. Let me tell you something.
Alright.
And the employees here have not gotten a raise in four years.
He has had.
Huh?
He has had.
His has.
The county.
Okay? And they don't have the amount of demands that we have. You can't compare the county with us. They're ruled. Okay?
Alright.
They're not gonna bail me out. They're not gonna bail this city out. Okay, so don't compare Washington, don't compare the county, don't compare Harlingen. Each city is different. We have civil service. The county doesn't have civil service.
No, they do what they were to start discussing.
Okay? That was impacting their budget the way ours is. We're locked into contracts.
But Mr. Mayor, a budget is a budget. If they could reduce some of that, why can't you reduce?
Okay. Let me ask you, let me ask you this, Mr. Barrera. I think your intent, I think your intent is good. I think you're well, good intentions. And you speak in generalities. You don't trust us. You don't trust management to look into how we can save the city money. Apparently, you don't, okay? Well, no, let me say, even though we're doing everything we can, you're still not gonna trust us, okay? I want you to show me, not in generalities, where are we gonna get five, six million dollars? Why don't we start with you? I mean, we gave you an exemption on your home. You don't pay taxes, all this stuff. Why don't you return that? You know, why don't you start a crusade to where we, the people sixty-five years over are not gonna be exempted? How much do we lose there? Pete, how much do we lose? Pete?
Pete.
Pete, how much do we lose by giving this gentleman and, and his ass, senior citizens, the exemption?
We're, right now, about, it's like four hundred and fifty in front of us.
Okay, that's five hundred thousand. Okay? Would you support us eliminating your exemption and taxing you?
No, no.
Oh, of course not. Because, mira, no más para acá, nada para allá.
No.
Okay, let me ask you this. Now, now, you're a patriot. You're a patriot.
Right.
Okay? And I don't want you to compare us to Washington. Washington, we can't control the money.
They print the money.
They print the money. So they can give the stimulus, they can, they can spend however recklessly they want. They print the money, okay?
They are doing it.
Okay? This is local. This is your police force. This is your fire department. This is your streets. This is your employees. It's not Washington. You're in control here. You're affecting us here. Let me ask you this. You're a patriot. If I told you, we could get out of this hole and have a healthy city, by everybody, every, everybody, uh, every, everybody paying sixty dollars, not, I'm not, about every household, let's say, every household, sixty dollars a year to get us out of this hole, would you support that? Sixty dollars a year? One-time fee of sixty dollars a year? Would you support that? No? So, you can't afford, your patriotism can't afford sixty dollars to have a healthy city? That's what you're saying? You don't want streets? You don't want police? You don't want us to provide the services that you demand? Is that what you're saying?
If, if it has been-
For sixty dollars, sixty dollars.
If it has been done in the past, it can be done today. You know, I have a budget at home.
Okay, let me ask you this.
And I, I've lived within my budget.
Okay, let me ask you this.
And I still have some surplus left over.
Let me ask you this.
Because I am a conservative.
Let me ask you this. When the tax rate was sixty-eight cents, three cents, the three cents they're recommending now, it's sixty-five cents now, okay? When it was three cents, did you complain that it went down?
No, of course not.
Of course not, okay? Because the conditions were different, okay? And the city could afford it to go down, okay? Now, you can't get it in your head that the conditions are, that, 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 trade is down, sales taxes are down, we can't control that. The bridge revenues are down, we can't control that. The economy's down, we can't control that. Okay? So you can't get in your head that things are different.
No, I, I understand that, Mayor.
No, 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 let me finish, let me finish. Now, in the nineties, the tax rate was seventy-five cents.
Okay.
Okay? Seventy-five cents. So it's gone down, but the city has grown more and more demands, and we're doing less with more mon, uh, we're doing more with less money, okay? So, if, if your pension fund were to be eliminated, okay? Your pension fund were to be eliminated, would you be here saying that you would live within your budget? You probably couldn't. That's what's happening to the city. We don't have those revenues. Your pension fund is eliminated, you can't live within your budget. The city, the revenues have gone down steeply, where it affect, you can't understand that? That we don't have the money?
I understand that, Mr. Mayor.
So tell me, okay, tell me where we're gonna get the money?
Let me, let me, let me say a few things.
Tell me where we're gonna get the money.
But the thing is that you say that the county, it's, it's a different entity and so forth, alright? But if they could do it within their budget, then maybe-
They raised, they, they raised the bridge tolls.
Maybe the city can do it.
I'll, I'll let Commissioner Atkinson first.
They raised the bridge tolls. And ma, they're making more people pay now.
Yeah.
Which is gonna help the city also, but they, 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 they're charging more fees now. So, either we do it in fees or we do it in taxes. What do you want?
We have the right to do it through fees, the way they do it. But we don't. We don't.
What, what do you want?
He didn't raise, but he, he went to the fees, he used the fees to do it.
Yeah, they raised-
And their, and their needs are quite different, totally different.
And, and let me, let me, Charlie, you done?
Yeah, yeah, I'm done.
Let me give you the perfect example. Perfect example in comparing the county to the city, okay? And this is just fact. This is not picking on anybody, this is not going, by any means going against anybody. The late Pete Benavides and Sofia Benavides represent Precinct One. In my area, in Southmost, they call the county office. I live on Twenty-Sixth Street. Back in the time before Berice Park was ready and all these things, we need the county's assistance. Call Rick Longoria. Call the city. That's their realm. Yet, they get elected by the same group of people within the inner-city circle. But you know what? It's the city's responsibility to take care of your street on Twenty-Sixth. If you live on Maverick, if you live on the outskirts of the city, in Salado, if you live with Alzo, Sofia can help you out, Pete can help you out. Because that's their area, that's where they go tend to. The necessities and the needs at En Salado, on Maverick, are totally, totally, completely different from an infrastructure that we have in the city. So, if you call the county office at Precinct One and tell them, "I need help within the Southmost area," they're gonna tell you, "You need to call Commissioner Longoria." Because that's their job, and that's my job. It's my entity's responsibility to take care of those issues. But you know what? It's a lot more expensive to take care of an inner city than it is at the county. It's just so simple to say, "You know what? I'm sorry. You know, you are, you are Precinct One Commissioner, Precinct Two Commissioner, Precinct Three County Judge. You are elected by the same group of citizens that elect the city official." But like Mayor said last time, if you look at the scope of sequence and the, and the scope of the job that we perform and the necessity and the people that we need to tend to versus the people at the county, whether at an individual level or them as an entity, it's a whole different thing from what they're allowed to do and they're allowed to spend on versus what we have to. We have to spend on the whole inner city as a whole. Yeah, we do inter-local agreements on some projects and we help each other out, and that's great. But when you look at it, you live in the inner city. I live, we all live in the inner city. And the demand is greater, and the expense is a lot greater than versus what the county has. And that's just plain fact, Mr. Barrera. That's just plain fact. So, to compare the county to the city, in entity, like you said, you know, we can't compare us to the federal government. You can't compare the expenses that the county has with the inner city because they're totally and completely one-hundred percent different.
Let me tell, let me tell you this. If the county had to set up a fire department, they'd be broke. You know what they do? They give us a pittance so we can respond and meet their needs.
They give us what?
A pittance. They don't get, if they were to pay us for what it was worth to, to provide them the service, it would be a lot more than what they're paying us, okay? But we work with them.
For fire expenses.
Okay? You, you go, you go, you go build a street in the county, you don't have to put curb and gutter. Here you do. The standards are a little different. So don't compare us to the county. But let's not get into generalities. You're here, and we had this heated discussion many times ever since I've been elected, and I told you this was gonna happen, and you've brought no solutions. I want you to give me a solution. Where are we gonna get the money, Mr. Barrera? I, I, I recommend that we eliminate the voluntary, uh, 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 tax rate for the senior citizens like yourself, and you give us five hundred thousand dollars to help us, you know? I mean, you don't, you, you're good to, to oppose, but you, you wanna take and take and take, you don't wanna give nothing. You don't wanna give us sixty dollars a month, I mean, a year. Sixty dollars a year. A year to build a better city. I think that's pretty selfish, if you don't mind me saying.
No, no, I'm not selfish. It's just that I'm too conservative while some of the city people and the county people and the, the, the state and national level, they're not conservative. They say they are, but they're not.
Tell that to the employee-
Just like everybody else.
Tell that to the employee who hasn't gotten a raise in four years.
Just like everybody else, Mr. Mayor, you know? Right now, the people don't have that much money. There's no jobs. People are being laid off. A lot of houses are being repossessed. Cars, the same way. Even the teachers, some of their cars are being repossessed. And the teachers make pretty fair money. So they're having troubles. That's what I'm saying.
But you're not, you're okay. You're not willing to put up sixty dollars and you're okay.
Well, I'm okay because I have been very conservative, more conservative than anybody else.
Will you be, will you be happy when the city files bankruptcy? Will you be happy then?
No, no, no.
And then what solution do you have? I want, I want a solution!
We got people like Pete Gonzalez and so forth to, to find solutions financially. You know, I'm not a, you know, I've got two, three degrees, but they're, none of them are in statistics or accounting or, and that type of a thing, you know?
So then, how can you recommend that we're not doing, how can you say then that we're not doing enough? You don't have, you don't have the data to support that we're not doing enough? Yet, you're saying we're not doing enough?
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that try to do more by lowering somewhere in your budget. If no sea donde, I don't know, but you've got this guy right here, Pete, that knows-
Pete, have you done everything you could? Okay? Do you, do you not believe him?
I trust, I trust little Pete here.
Okay, then, so if you trust, if you trust him and you believe him, you don't accept it?
Well, I was just hoping that you people would have some answers.
We do, but you don't like the answer. You don't like the answer.
But the answer isn't that you're not cutting anything, you just-
We have cut. We have cut!
Every department cut how many?
Well, I might be wrong. I might be wrong, and I admit that, uh, you know, statistically and so forth, you know, uh, I don't know too much about it.
But we were, we were seventy-five-
But I know that in my house, in my house, mira, I go around and I tell my wife, mira, apaga la luz, because I've got two, three bulbs. Apaga la luz, and, and she does it. He, uh, and, and everything that, that needs to be cut, oye, ahí está Barrera, to cut, cut, cut. Tienes? And we don't go to Lubie's and we don't go here and go there. Why? Because, mira.
The county gets paid-
And if I can do it, the rest of the people can do it. That's why everybody's on, got troubles. They're in debt, they all over the place. Les pegan en la puerta y no quieren instalar because they've, they, they owe taxes all over the place. You see?
The county, the county does less than we do. Their budget is less than ours, of course.
Okay.
There's less demands. We have to do a lot more. We have to provide more services. The commission is, has to spend more time, just by the nature of, of the demands that are being put on us. We're here voluntary, on a voluntary basis. We're here on a voluntary basis. The county gets paid. And they get car allowances. I didn't hear you going around over there telling them to eliminate their pay and their car allowances to, to, you know? We, we're here to ser-
You know, I was thinking about that. They oughta suffer just like you people.
We're here to serve you. We're here to serve you, and yet, every little thing we do is not good enough.
No, no. I go everywhere. I go to the appraisal district, I go to the county, to the college, to the port, to, to, so they can learn to live within their means. I might be, uh, wrong about you people as far as you're, you're, you're not trying to, to cut down expenses. But if you are, I go along with you and, and I'll just-
That's, that's where I wanna go. That's where I wanna go. One last question. What would it take to convince you, to, to show you this is the reality? That we have a shortage?
No, this guy right here convinced me, Pete.
Okay, he convinced you, okay.
I know that-
So then, what would it take you to support what he says?
No, I support him.
He's asking, he's asking for a three-cent increase.
But it doesn't hurt for me to give you a little bit so you know, ah, Barrera's time watching us.
But you know what? We watch you too, Barrera, and you went to the county and you asked and supported a one-cent increase at the county. They raised taxes last year. Why were you okay with that? And now here, you're, you're coming to us and saying, "No." You, you were there twice when they raised taxes in the last four years at the county, and you've, you've supported the tax increase at the county. Why not here now? We haven't raised in ten years.
I probably supported one penny when they were asking for three or four.
Okay, okay, okay. So, Mr. 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 Gonzalez is saying, you know, it would take, I think-
Raise us one penny, Pete. Raise us one penny, and we'll stop there.
He said three cents. You support what he says. He said three cents, we need three cents.
I, I, no, 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 no. I don't agree to three cents.
We're making headway.
One penny, alright.
We're making headway.
Hey, we got Barrera to agree to one cent?
Okay, let's go forward.
Okay. Uh, the mayor is always talking about how do we solve problems and give me, and, and, and running people against the wall. Give me the answer, give me the answer. If the commission can't come up with the answer, I think it's, it's something for all of us to think about.
Yeah, but when you come up with the answer, you don't like the answer, that's a problem.
But I haven't said anything.
No, no.
I haven't said anything.
I hear you all the time, but you don't like the answers.
No, but you don't like to ha- have people speak. It's only you speak, and, and we people, we have to draw back because what can we do? Okay, may I speak now?
Please go right ahead.
Thank you. Perhaps other people might have answers, I'm, I don't say I have the most, uh, 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 excellent answer, but I do have some thoughts because where do we get the money? Where do we get the money? Where do we get the money? Where do we get the commission? Okay. Taxes, taxes, this is our answer, taxes, tax. What about something different? Let's think outside the box. I think that's a better solution. Why do we treat Brownsville like a one-horse town? This is not a one-horse town. This is a thriving community that has a lot of, a lot of individuals, a lot of citizens, and it's growing with the violence in Mexico. People are flooding over here. Okay, now with that in mind, okay, why do we have just one P U B? Why is there one Texas gas service? Why do we just have one cable? Why do we, why can't we open it to the market? Okay? We don't follow the city charter anyway, so we, we pick and choose as, as we wish. So if we open up the market, you give people options, and you have people coming in, and there's diversity. Diversity is healthy. It brings in money. It gives us choices. When we had one hospital here in Brownsville, Mercy Hospital, everybody had to go to the same hospital whether they liked it or not. But we have diversity now, so we have competition. Competition is healthy. It will always be healthy. Why can't we just look at something beyond that?
Mr. Mayor, we're talking, the agenda item is the budget for the next fiscal year, it's not about...
I know, but I...
Opening, opening the market gives you an increased tax base, Mr. Saucy.
Very broad way of interpreting the agenda.
Well, whatever you want to say, it's your interpretation, but I believe that it's still within the realm.
Let the, I love you to death, I think you're...
Well, so do I, I love you to death, but we disagree.
I think you have good intentions. But if you, if you would stop and analyze what you're saying, if you sat down with management, you would find out that it's so general and so unrealistic. Like, for instance, why don't we have two gas companies? Well, to, to, to make the investment, to put the lines in and have the proprietorship of providing that service, it's enormous.
Not for you, for the person that's coming in.
And anybody wants to do it, it's welcome to come here and do it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You're not investing, they're investing, and you're saying, okay.
It's, it's not as simple as you make it out to be.
But why not try it? Why not, why not open it up? If you, we had one hospital, uh, uh...
That's a private sector.
Mayor, we had one hospital.
We have one P U B, that's a benefit to you.
Well, it could be, but, but why...
Why would we want some...
But we don't have the tax base.
Let the, why would we want to open up competition to our own selves? It doesn't make sense.
Because you're going to increase your tax base. I get, competition is healthy.
Mr. Mayor, this is the agenda item, it's the budget, not the tax.
He's right. I was trying to respond to make her understand, but she doesn't understand.
Okay, so...
Please stick to the budget.
Okay, so increasing your tax base by opening the market gives you a better and healthier economy. When you get a better and healthier economy, you're able to bring and not stifle the taxpayers by wanting more taxes because you've increased your tax base. But that, if it never has been considered and never will be considered, then so be it. Then keep on taxing the people until there's no homes and everybody's out, out, homeless. I mean, if that's the intent of this commission. Because there's no jobs here, and there's nobody producing jobs. So if you intrigue, in, in, increase your tax base, you have something to work with. I'm not saying it's perfect. Nothing is perfect, but you know what? At least it's a start. It's, it's opening something, uh, different than what has been said here. Taxes and taxes and more taxes, and that's all we can talk about is taxes, three cents, five cents, whatever the commission decides. And whatever you decide, it's your decision. We have to abide by it. Whether we're going to lose our houses or not, we are still going to have to abide by it. That's a given. But if we want to say, let's increase our tax base, let's increase tax base, whether it's in manufacturing, in new industry, and if, if your, your, your company is not producing, your, 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 uh, four A company is not producing the jobs in manufacturing that you need, well, review it. Find out what's happening. Is there something that we can tweak to maybe bring industry or something to what? To improve the budget? Because everything's about the budget and the taxes and the situations that we all face. You're going to do whatever you, you need to do, but I think that, that, that possibly we can look at different solutions. Maybe it's not what you would like to hear, but the, there are the solutions that don't necessarily, uh, you know, include your brain cells. It includes other brain cells.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Longoria had something to say. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Gomez, the report that you produce to us on a weekly basis, is there any confidential information on that that would prohibit it from being viewed by the public? No? I'm going to ask you, you would please do me a favor and give it either to our webmaster or to somebody on Channel 12 so that people can see that businesses are opening up in Brownsville. It's not as good as it used to be, but there is movement. In other words, that people are not coming to invest in the Brownsville, that people are not coming in to open their businesses? They are. They are, and they are on a weekly basis, and they're coming for permits, and they're coming for all these things. And we have a list. We receive a list every week of people that come and, and are, are new to the city. So, I mean, maybe that's something that would be beneficial to let people know that, you know what? These businesses slowly but surely, it's not as good as it used to be. Man, it used to be great, we used to get a three-page report. Now we only get a, a one and a half or a two-page report. But it is, you know, people, that's, I don't know if it's beneficial, it's beneficial to the city, it's terrible what's happening in Mexico. But we're having a lot of Mexican investors coming in, and slowly but surely, opening up the small businesses and starting off, and they are purchasing our homes, they are purchasing a lot of repos, so that is positive for Brownsville. But in essence, they are coming, it's just that with the economy right now, it's, it's pretty difficult. But I can assure you that there are people that are investing in the Brownsville and are opening their businesses. So maybe we, we could get that information out to people, that'd be a little beneficial.
Well, it probably will.
That's good, but the problem with that report, it doesn't show you all the businesses that closed too. But the, the, the point is, what you're talking in generalities, we're doing already. I mean, it's not like we're not doing it. Uh, the reality is, the reality, Letty, is, is that we have a shortage. And you don't have a solution.
Well, we've had solutions, but it, it's cutting back.
I understand, I understand, they're general solutions, but what I'm saying is...
Cutting back on a lot of stuff?
How we, we gotta, we gotta prove a budget. We gotta approve a budget. And we can't get that from the thin air, like you're talking about. And make it snap, let it bounce, you can't do that. We gotta provide a solution. Now, I haven't heard one tonight.
Mr. Barrera had other things to say, and, and...
He supported a tax increase.
And, yeah, I, I know, I was there.
We're working on it, we're working on it.
So, so, so maybe, maybe some more, some more...
If we go up three cents, if we go up three cents, he'll be one penny less mad.
Well, anyway, our prayers are with you all that you come up with the right solution for all of us.
Thank you so much, Letty. Okay.
Short it is. Good evening, my name is Craig Timmer, I do hope to keep this short. Unlike Mr. Barrera, I'm not conservative, and I would write you out a check tonight if you could, for sixty dollars, even for eighty dollars, if we could get the rest of the community to follow through. One thing that I've noticed over the last number of years, whenever you have the budget hearings, is people always say, yeah, cut the budget, but don't cut it where I receive the monies from. And, and, and I guess that's appropriate, I guess that's human nature. But there are a couple of things I would like very much for the commission to consider, and I think that Mr. De Leon alluded to selling off the golf course, which I think would be a fantastic idea because that's a huge white elephant. Uh, I would also like to suggest that some of the community cultural entities, nice as they are, good as they are for the community, I think, I would rather see more money pumped into our safety services than I would into, as an example, the art museum and the children's museum, as an example. Uh, I think some of those buildings over there are probably underused, and, and certainly if you try to rent them, their, their rents are extremely high. But that's, that's neither here nor there. I do think that there are some possibilities. Uh, I think privatizing some of the entities is probably a good idea also, which would save us, I hope, a good bit of money. So those are my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Timmer, even though I disagree with you about the arts.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure.
I know we're asking people for solutions, uh, is there any ideas from this commission?
Let's see, let's go through the public hearing, then we'll, we'll turn up the commission. But I want to make one clear, one thing clear. I do not support, and, and I was just trying to make a point about the tax exemption for the senior citizens. Okay? I'm not out to take it away from them, but it just goes to show is, don't take it from me. Take it from somebody else, but not from me. It's a half a million dollars that we provide, uh, a tax exemption to the senior citizens, and we will continue to provide it. But it was a good example of, people would come here and say, I don't do this, don't do that. But as long as you don't affect me, go do it, so please.
Uh, Thede Flores, U.S. citizen. Uh, one of the suggestions I was making earlier was the insurance. Uh, why don't, why don't you increase the deductible?
We did.
That should, uh, lower the premiums. For example, like the lower-paid, uh, employees, you can start them out with a thousand-dollar deductible, and the higher-paid employees, uh, increase it to five thousand. I have a five-thousand-dollar deductible in my medical insurance, and I, little by little, I save that money, and I have it set aside for an emergency for my five, to meet my first five thousand dollars. Uh, pension funds, reduce them, twenty-five percent, fifty percent, I don't know. I don't know what's the magic number. But pension funds should be reduced, I mean, we're in a crunch, so they need to be reduced. Uh, I don't know, you love to travel to Mexico, I don't know you're aware, but, uh, foreigners that come here, if they make a, a half a million-dollar investment, they can get fast-tracked in, uh, for getting their green, uh, cards. So maybe that's something that you can promote. Come in and make a, a half a million-dollar investment here, and you can make, you can get your green card. Um, uh, eliminate cars, uh, company cars. Uh, start a carpool. Let the people come in with their cars, and when they have city, uh, business to conduct, they can get a car from the carpool, and that reduces the amount of cars that are out in the field, and, uh, will reduce insurance rates. Uh, I worked in a company, H L M P, and, uh, we all had personal cars. I, I was one of those few people that were, then they moved us into a carpool, uh, situation, and that worked, uh, very fine. So those are just ideas that, that I have to share with you guys.
Thank you, Thede. Pastor Brad Burke.
Brad Burks. I, I just, like you said, uh, Mr. De Leon had a great idea with the sports park, getting corporate sponsors. Uh, why not expand that to corporate sponsors for the golf course, for the arts museum, for, uh, the parks? Uh, you'd like to see a new gym in a park, uh, uh, see if a, a corporate sponsor might be interested. That, that may help with the budget, I don't know how quick...
And, and let me tell you, these entities are always looking for corporate sponsors, the zoo, the museums. The sports park, I don't know about the sports park, but that's something to look at, of course, we should always look for corporate sponsors.
When I was on chairman of the four B, I was, we had that task at hand. It's just that the end, the, the private companies that we were approaching to come to the sports park and have the sports park named after them, wanted to give us pennies for what they were getting in return. We weren't looking for millions and millions and millions of dollars, but we weren't going to give away the name and the rights to, to a concession vendor at the sports park for a hundred thousand dollars.
No.
It's just not going to work. And everybody that was interested, was interested in giving us a couple of hundred thousand, and having full concession at the park, that's why it hadn't worked out. Because we haven't had that correct vendor, you know, come in and say, you know what? This is what I, this is what I'm willing to give, and for the city to say, it's worth it. You know, what they were offering, like I said once again...
Like the Dodger Inn.
Yeah, there were pennies.
Well, tell them we want three pennies for the value of Brownsville.
Can I add to that too, Reverend? On our board, and we've, we've, we're seeing now with this construction of what we're going to build out there, that was the last step to where the corporate sponsors like Fred Loya, other places, they're interested. Once this stadium gets built, you'll see a more willingness from a corporate sponsor, instead of paying taxes, put it toward an entity that can bring in masses. You know, uh, that's where we're at right now. We do have a lot of interest in corporate sponsorships right now, but just like everybody else is like, okay, what? The city's building, or B C I C's building it now. After it's built, then I'm going to be playing the game. Now, the, the price from two hundred thousand might go up to a million five to be a corporate sponsor at the sports park.
My thinking is show them plans and say, this is what you could buy, and let them pay for building it, that's an idea.
And all this is good, but again, it goes back to generalities.
I know you've got a budget to pick, I know you've got a budget to pass now in the next two weeks, and these are ideas, but...
As to how do we make this shortfall up? That's what I want.
I, I know, we're not going to sell all these corporate sponsors in the next two weeks, and you need a budget between now and then.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is the public hearing, Mr. Perez.
I know that, um, you all are saying every single budget, every single entity or department in this city cut their budget by ten percent. Are we all in agreement?
I left that up to management to do whatever he thought would be...
No, no, but you said, or was it you, Commissioner Atkinson?
Don't point at me.
Oh, I just want to make sure that you, you said it, or somebody in here said it. You, you didn't.
Whatever it is...
You didn't.
Just whatever the management did, we support, okay?
Okay, so you changed your story. It was first, management cut ten percent out of every single department, now it isn't. No, my point is that your city manager's office went up thirteen grand. I know he says that it was because of Mr. Johnson going into his department, but they went up thirteen grand. Uh, Mr. Saucy's department went down only seven hundred and forty-eight dollars, I think is what it was. That doesn't seem to be a lot, ten percent. Are you sure that everybody actually cut their budget by ten percent?
We cut what we thought could be cut.
Okay, so now it's different. It was, you cut by ten percent, no matter what, now it isn't. No, I just want to make sure.
That had nothing to do with the commission, that was our, that was our decision.
I understand, no, no, but, okay, but...
This gentleman is, is a little nitpicky...
No, I'm not, because you're presenting misinformation, Mr. Mayor.
Who likes to...
No, I don't like it, I wish...
You like the attention.
No, I don't.
You like being right, and you like coming up here, and, you know, but you really...
I'd like to show it, if thirteen grand isn't like a...
You're way out of your tree. Now, we've done what we could through management to cut expenses down. That's not good enough for you, too bad. We've done what we could, okay?
No, well, it's not we then, because then it's the management's done whatever they can. That means you haven't done it, because when you say we, is it management or is it you?
It counts before us to approve the budget, sir.
Okay, well, the problem that I'm also having is that you say that public safety, I think you said last week with what, seventy-two percent? You said it last year as well.
I think that's a figure I was, that's a figure I was providing. If it's wrong, I apologize.
No, you're wrong, yeah.
I'll blame the city, uh, finance director. I'll blame him.
Really? Because it's in the budget.
He gave you a bad number.
No, he didn't.
What is it, Pete?
It's forty percent. It's forty percent.
This gentleman, what is the, uh, public safety, uh, uh, budget? Out of the general fund?
Forty point eight eight percent, which is forty-one percent.
Out of the general fund, how much is it?
No, it's forty-one percent, Pete. It's on page twelve or twenty-eight.
Public safety is forty-one percent? It can be.
In the general fund, it's about fifty-seven.
No, if you look over, well, that's actually page twelve, but in page twenty-eight, it's forty-one percent, right? So it's, but it's not anywhere near ninety percent.
You're commilling the funds from the airport, no, no, I'm talking about the general fund only.
Okay, well, it's not seventy percent then.
What is it, what is it, what is it? Okay, I saw, I saw fifty-seven percent. I saw seventy-two percent somewhere along the line, is that right, Pete?
Whatever the percentage is, it's...
So I'll blame him.
Okay, blame him then. Blame him because you didn't read your budget.
How is that going to change what the shortage is?
No, it does change.
Mr. Perez, how is that going to change the shortfall? Give me a solution, instead of being here nitpicky. Give me a solution, please.
Mr. Mayor, the reason I'm bringing this up is because you argue, you've said it already in this meeting. You said, well, we, we, the, 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 your employees have not received a raise in, what, three, four years now? And you say that every single year, it's not part of your budget. You say that you, you have this budget deficit, but all you're really doing is saying that you're cutting the rate of growth. I, I, that's what it sounds like, it's not necessarily true, but it sounds like you're actually just cutting the rate of growth. You don't have a deficit when you still have reserves in your budget. You're not going to have to incur bankruptcy if you have reserves in your budget. You haven't done everything, you're saying that ten percent has been cut by every single department, where it hasn't actually been, been so. That's my problem.
Okay.
All right.
You've got a good problem.
I have a good problem? How do I have the problem when you're the one?
Live with it, deal with it.
I don't have to deal with it.
Deal with it. What do you want me to do?
I'm trying to understand what you're trying to say.
What do you want me to do? You want me to go blow my brains out? What do you want me to do?
Whoa, I'm not even coming anywhere near that, Mr. Mayor, but...
What is it that you want from me?
No, my problem is, is that I want you to be actually accurate whenever you say something. I don't want you to be going out there and saying that you're...
Please forgive me, I'm human, dear Lord.
Well, no, you didn't forgive the citizens.
I, I have so many things going, all of us have so many things going on. If I misquoted a, a number from the finance director, forgive me, Lord.
You've done it two years in a row. The problem is, Mr. Mayor, that when you tell people that we, that me, or my friends, or anybody, any fellow citizens say misinformation at this city commission meeting, you silence us. But whenever you repeat misinformation, that's actually factual and misinformation that your city employees have not told you because it's in your budget, you could easily just say the correct answer. Don't tell me, don't, don't ask him to say it, because you actually were talking about the budget at last public hearing when he comes back.
Give me a solution to the budget, Mr. Perez.
I have, I already told you. Go to the citizens and ask them for that. Oh, the other thing is, I wanted to ask you...
That's an option.
That is an option.
Okay, so we, 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 it's within our discretion, so...
Mr. Mayor...
Well noted. Do you have any other solutions?
The other question is, is with regards to your budget, because your budget doesn't include the rollback rate number or the numbers that you want to increase it, even though if you were to go above the rollback tax rate, does it automatically kick in, um, in an election? Or is it that the citizens have to petition? Pete?
Yes, they have to petition.
They have to petition. So it's actually possible for you all to vote against it and the citizens don't. So that's another option. You could actually go above the rollback rate and hope that the citizens don't petition. Hopefully apathy will help you in that sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, thank you. You're such a genius. God, we're in good hands. Okay, um...
Real quick, I think there's a lot of energy here, good or bad, but, and a lot of people have brought a lot of things to this podium, but until you get involved in city business, or you are a city employee, or a city elected official, I don't think a citizen has the, the idea of the scope or the magnitude of what we're asking you to do on a day-to-day basis. I bet y'all don't have lives anymore because of all the demands that are put on you, whether it be the sports park, or, um, um, the pets, or environmental issues. It's really a shame. Um, we are a large city. I just came back from a small city, and they have seventy-nine hundred people. It hasn't grown in twelve years, and they have a three-million-dollar deficit, I mean, um, shortage. But we're a hu- a hundred and eighty, two-hundred thousand people here, and we have a shortage. But if we need to get taxed, and this is the thing that needs to be done, I'm sure the citizens that are out there, the five thousand of us that vote, because in a city of a hundred and eighty thousand people, there are about forty-nine hundred of us that go to the polls and vote, we will adjust to that. We, we will deal with it. But I, I really believe that you have to serve on a board, go to board meetings, and, and I think some of these people do that, but you need to get really involved and try to make a difference in, in this city. And, and you can do it. Baby steps, we can do it. So, we try to accommodate. I, I really have to say that I appreciate what you do. I don't always agree with it, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Timmer.
And I would give you my sixty dollars for the children's museum and the arts.
Thank you, Ms. Timmer. Okay, uh, I'm going to open it up to the, to the, I'm going to open it up to the commission, but before I, I, I go there, I just want to make this point. We, 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 uh, we're, like Ms. Timmer said, we're about almost two-hundred thousand people. You don't see a great number here opposing a tax rate increase. In fact, you only see the three or four people that come here and oppose everything, every meeting. That's the only ones you see here. That's the only ones you see here saying, don't do this, don't do that, don't do this, don't do that. And like Ms. Timmer said, they have no concept of the scope of what it takes to keep a city running. They're so focused on the penny, they're so focused on being right, or, or opposing this, or opposing that, that they lose, I think, the perception of what it takes to invest in ourselves, to expand our economy, to provide the services, and build a better city. You know, we have the best police department, I think, in, in the region. Our crime is down. I mean, it's, compared to other cities this size, especially on the border. You know, I feel safe here. And with all, everything that's going on over there, I feel safe here. But we pay our police department a good penny. You know, that's what it takes. We've got to buy equipment for them, police cars. The people opposed here from us issuing the C O's, you know, that's what it takes. You know, some people will agree on the arts, some people will not, whatever, the zoo, whatever. Those are, those are differences of opinion, but it all makes it work. This is our city. Now, while I've read Dallas, where citizens were clamoring, raise our taxes because they want their elected officials to provide the services that produces a good city, and a safe city. Here, we're in a situation where it's reality, ladies and gentlemen. We have a deficit of millions of dollars, and if we don't correct it now, the hole's going to get bigger. And I think in the forties, I, I read back some time back, this city was about to file bankruptcy. We don't want to get there. We don't want to sacrifice the services, and it's not fair for our employees not to have a raise in three or four years. That's not fair. I mean, you know, Mr. Barrera is happy with his life the way it is, but I assure you, if they cut his pension fund to where he didn't have that security, he'd be mad at them. Our employees are having to do more with less. And some, if, if it keeps going this way, will be discouraged, and they'll start leaving us and going to apply someplace else. You can't continue to keep people to, from, from giving them what is rightfully theirs, a cost of living raise, a cost of living raise. Not a huge raise, just a cost of living raise. Now, if you compare us with a county, I'm sure they're better paid than we are. And I'm not talking about the commission, I'm talking about the management. Compare them to P U B and the directors. Compare them to the university, and I don't hear nobody clamoring over there, asking for their heads. And they come here, the same three or four, asking for our heads. Same ones. Our city manager, I don't know how much he makes, how much you make, Charlie, a hundred and twenty?
I got to check the budget, Mr., uh, Mayor, I'm not going to, I don't want to...
Well, how much you make?
A hundred and fifty, more or less.
A hundred and fifty. P U B, I think the general manager makes a hundred and eighty. Okay? But he's only charged water, electricity. Gets good insurance, car allowances, and all this other stuff, whatever he gets, you know? To me, we should pay more. Our directors here, you compare them to P U B, they make more than we do here. Our directors here, you compare them to P U B, they make more than we do here. Compare them to the university, uh, I, I don't know, maybe wrong, but the, the president there probably makes a quarter million dollars. You know? Okay? And they, they get a house allowance, and they get all these benefits. Go to the port, less headaches than what this man has to pay for a hundred and forty dollars, a thousand. Less headaches. And you all come here, you want our blood. Basically, that's what you want. You're not happy till you draw the blood. We contribute our time. I mean, I paid a lot of my expenses going to Mexico, and I heard somebody here yelling at me for going to Mexico. You know? It's kinda unfair and discouraging because this is your city. We want him to be successful, uh, Mr. Ayala, with promoting our city to, to increase the hotel occupancy. But he's gonna have a shortage. We gotta help him out. We helped him out three years ago. We can't afford for him to fail because we're going through bad times. But in order to that, do that, you have to accept personal responsibility yourself as citizens. As citizens. This is your community. It's not just mine, it's not just theirs, it's your community. And we're asking you to be the patriots. I think we can balance a budget with a combination of ways of doing it, which will total up to about sixty dollars per household a year. I think everybody can afford sixty dollars before he gets out of hand to where we have to file bankruptcy. Or cut back on, on employees, or, uh, cut back on public safety where you're not safe. You know, we need ambulances. I've been harping, harping on ambulances the day I got in, many of you remember that. We have shortage, we need ambulances. I hear complaints about that we don't have enough ambulance to respond. We have to hire, uh, from other municipalities. That's pathetic. We should have our own ambulances, and we don't. This is your life at hand maybe tomorrow, that you're gonna need one, and we're gonna put you on hold. Bring one from Los Fresnos, bring one from Port Isabel. And your loved one is depending on us to provide the service, but yet you're not willing to contribute a measly sixty dollars to help us get there. So with that, I wanna open it up to the commission. We heard from the public, no solutions. Okay? It's up to us to come up solutions. We may not agree, but I'm sure that if we all put everything aside, we can help management balance its budget and ensure that we operate a healthy city. So, let's open up to the commission.
Mayor Melafour. You know, I think, um, after hearing many of the, uh, many of the individuals speak and offer their solutions, and Mayor, after hearing you and, and some of the others, um, we're all, we're all over the place. Um, I think there's a couple of things that I think we need to do. And that, and first of all, I think we're doing that right now. And that's with following United Brownsville and, and the plan that Imagine Brownsville set out for us. Without a plan, we have no direction, no sense of understanding of where we need to be. And most importantly, how do we grow our local economy? Um, I think some of us have said in the presentation, uh, about what, what, what is a way to generate additional dollars for the city of Brownsville? And how do we do that? And we rely a lot on property taxes. Um, and that's, a majority of that through homeowners and, and partially small, small businesses and small commercial development. But the other side is larger dollars. And how do we bring in those larger dollars to increase the property values of certain areas within the city limits that also bring in high-paying jobs? Part of that is through industrial parks. Uh, I think that's something that'll come down the line soon, uh, for the commission to, to, to look at and to support, uh, because it will bring higher-paying jobs, property values would increase. And that's, that's an area that we haven't seen. And until we see that side, uh, uh, of development in this city, we're gonna, always gonna be scrap, you know, scraping for more, and more, and more. And that's not the direction. But that's the job creation part of it. But how do you get there? How do we get the, the park? How do we get the land? How do we get the infrastructure? Well, that goes back to the plan. And that goes back to looking at the entities that have the funds to help us develop those areas to make it welcoming for people to come. To decide off the bat, to start selling off this and that, you don't need that, in the city, you don't need this park, you don't need that golf course. Right now is, is, I don't think it's the right thing to do. Uh, I think you need to let development come, and, and let's bring in other people to show these are all the amenities that the city of Brownsville has. And, and we have a lot. Look at all the museums, look at all the things that are gonna be taking place, the kiosks. Look at the Market Square. Look at what's gonna be happening downtown with Entertainment District. There's gonna be, there's gonna be quite a bit of pluses that are gonna help us bring more people down, bring more tourism, and hopefully spur some economic, economic development in a, in a crucial area that, that many believe, uh, local economists and professors, um, is a direction for us to take. And until we do that, um, we're always gonna be backpedaling, and backpedaling, and saying, well, you need to raise taxes, and you need to pay so much. I don't, I don't think that's where we're at. I think we need to make sure that we have the, the development in place so that it, so that everything begins to take care itself, and that the funds that do come in and, and are generated, go to help employees. Go to take care of fire, public safety, because they do need it. Every city employee is very, very worthy. They don't make enough. Um, but at the same time, there should also be a mechanism that looks at every city employee, that looks at every director, that looks at every management. And each department should be audited. If I'm a new director, if I'm a new manager that comes in, I should have had every, I, I should have top-down, left-to-right, an audit of everyone. Do I need this? Do I don't need this? What's my travel account look like? Do I need it? Do I not? Is, are there webinars to consider? And that's a whole other complex, but I'm not a manager. But I studied this, and, 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 and I'm not gonna try to, to wear that hat, but as a, as throwing out ideas, these are things that need to be looked at. Departments that are, that are supposed to generate revenue. Did you meet your goal? Was there a goal? If not, why not? Why didn't we produce? Where did we fall short? And do this constantly and have these discussions so that we know where we need to make improvements. Um, I think that's essential. One of the things I think would be very much needed is an implementation of a, of a major, um, uh, major internship program. And we've been talking about this for a couple of years, and I know, uh, Commissioner Gallon's been talking to some folks at, at the campus, uh, level to, to see how we can really move this forward, and we'll work together to, to make that happen, but at a larger scale. So, you, you don't have the workforce that you know you, you most desiring that you need, but we can take young adults, study, and apply them to the city to help us function and do our jobs better. At the same time, that's not a cost that the city has to incur, and so we're relying on the university as, as we should, and they, to us. Um, and so that needs to happen, and that needs to be something that we, we push and we get. And until we do that, then we're gonna say, well, we need more people. Well, I know we need more people. But maybe that's not gonna happen until another two years or three years. Um, I know Tony mentioned no more take-home vehicles. I agree. Unless you're on on-call, unless you're animal control, unless you're PD, or whomever, then you take your vehicle home. And that's on a rotating ship. But everyone else shouldn't take a vehicle home. Um, turn off our lights. We, we do that at home. Every, every time I leave, I make sure everything's turned off. Why? Because you wanna conserve and reduce and not, not have this increased waste. Other entities are doing that. They're saving thousands of dollars. Should the city do the same? I totally agree. That would help. Uh, reduce travel. I mentioned that, so important. Only the folks that do need to travel, fire, save, public safety, some individuals that do need to get certifications, they should travel. All of, all those, let's see how things go next year, the following year. These are just some of the, uh, just some of the recommendations I would make on the short term, um, to consider, uh, in terms of balancing and kinda reducing what we have. But I think ultimately, again, going back to Imagine Brownsville, United Brownsville, is, is having the plan in place to help us gauge ourselves, um, and make sure that all the entities that we all talked about are taken care of, um, and, and put together in a way that we know how to get there. We know what we need, and we know how it's gonna be funded. And then eventually, who knows down the road? You know, we may be at that point, at that crossroads, at the crossroads that says, you know what? This would be the best time to consider a tax increase or whatever. But I think that until we get to that point, uh, there's ways to help in the city, uh, and, and grow our budget, and I, and, and like I said, I don't know. That's gonna happen over time, hopefully short-term rather than long-term.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, let me, let me start off with some hard numbers because what the Commissioner says very well and good, but I don't see the five, the five million being reduced. And that's what we gotta work on tonight. We gotta make up that five million. Long-term, I agree with Commissioner, uh, about all that, you know, expand tax base and all that, I agree with all that. What are we gonna do to make up the five million tonight? I support management's recommendation of three cents tax increase. I don't like supporting, especially our election year. It's suicide, if you wanna say that. But you know something? It's a responsibility also. It's a responsibility to you. And if you wanna take it the wrong way, take it. I'm trying to build a better community to ensure your public safety, to ensure that you have a good community. So, I'm gonna rely on management. They're telling us three cents, I will support the three cents. And management is recommending getting a grant from P U B for two and a half million. That will produce, um, I think, a million and a half, that'll produce four million. Okay? And I go back to what I initially, uh, introduced three years ago. A three-dollar fee, which will produce a million, three-hundred-eighty thousand. That will make up the shortage. It'll, it'll put us in a good position. All total, it'll be sixty dollars a year of a burden on the, on the community. Sixty dollars a year. By, by taking those things into account. The three cents, the three dollars, will, and it will produce the, uh, to balance the budget along with a two-point-five, uh, uh, grant from P U B. Now, to, to continue the momentum of having a healthy city and a balanced budget, I propose taxing the arcades, a hundred and fifty dollars per machine. I don't know how many machines we got. How many machines would you guess we have, uh, chief? Just give me a wild guess. Multiply a hundred and fifty times a thousand. How much would that generate?
A hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, that's right. Okay? That's, you know, that's something, maybe not, not, but that helps pay for police. They're the ones that have to enforce and do that. Okay? Um, it's a little bit. I, I support what, uh, I think, um, who was the one up here, Mr. Reese or somebody saying the twenty-five cent bus increase?
Oresti.
Who?
Oresti.
Mr. Oresti. He's, he recommended twenty-five cent increase. I, I support Mr. Oresti's recommendation. And of course, uh, energy efficiency, to look into, uh, being more energy efficient, efficient in our, uh, municipal buildings. I support doing audits, uh, having the auditor go and do audits on the, all funding, like C D P G funds and grants that we give out. I support, uh, selling half of the golf course to B I S D. I think at one time, they paid over a hundred thousand dollars an acre for, for, uh, property on San Marcello and, uh, and, um, Jose Marti, which then, then they found out they couldn't build a school there. Or the Brownsville Country Club is gonna be opened up from the rear with access roads there, which I think will make it more feasible for them. They were interested at one time.
Morrison Road.
Morrison Road, that's right. It'll be in the back, it'll give them access to where, it'll make it even more feasible to build schools, two schools there, the golf course, and, and, and that would, they were interested at one time at fifty-four acres. That was, was looking like it would generate five-point-four million dollars, half of the golf course. So, you know, I would like to pursue that and keep, uh, make the other half of nine whole golf courses and make it, help it make it part of the curriculum also with B I S D where students could use a golf course. Um, we have to increase the sales taxes, uh, and the hotel occupancy. And I think if we speed up what we, we started out with Entertainment District, uh, uh, by developing it right away, I think we can increase the sales taxes for next year. Uh, I'd like to see, uh, you know, an exhibit for the zoo. That would increase our, our, our sales tax and, and occupancy tax. Get a new exhibit. People, uh, can only go see the chi, the chimpanzees and the gorillas so many times. People need different attractions. So I support that. Support the museum and the arts. Uh, I support bringing the Mexican investors like, uh, it was suggested here. Um, the Chardais festivities. You know, that's something that, that I know it makes me look like a bad guy, but we never get reports here as to what they generate. We should have yearly reports, find out, you know, I know they're nonprofit, but where's their money going, where their income, and how much income they're taking in? Because we're having to pay for security to have these festivities. We have to pay to clean up the city. It costs us money. We spend about a hundred thousand dollars a year. And it's good for us. It's nothing, nothing, but they need to be also responsible. This is their city too. And if they were to pay a fifteen percent off the gross to the city to help offset the cost for public safety and cleanup, that would be less of a strain on our budget. I don't know how much money they make from the carnival, but I know they make a killing from the carnival. You know? But we don't know how much money they're making, and, 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 and they're welcome to make that money. But at least give us something back. This is your community. Don't just take and take and take. Give us fifteen percent. How much that would generate, I do not know. And I also recommend that, that, um, even though I oppose Imagine Brownsville, that this should be part of Imagine Brownsville. Like the Commissioner said, they have a plan. They should be right here today. How are you gonna help us with the deficit to, so we can make that plan happen? We can't make it happen if we don't have the funding to do all these grandiose things. They need to be part of this budget process and tell us, hey, support us in the tax increase. Because your plan is worthless if you don't have a city that is healthy. Those are the recommendations that I've heard from people, myself, management, the commissioners, that I think we should unite as a city to balance this budget. Because the next year is gonna get worse. We have civil service contracts that are coming up, no telling what's gonna happen. No telling what's gonna happen with our economy. But right now, we have a, a deficit we gotta take care of. And we can't afford to continue ignoring it. Commissioners, you wanna comment?
I think that we're not alone. Certainly, there are cities all over the country that are having these questions and problems and deficits of much, many more millions than we have. And they're all doing very innovative and, and, and highly distasteful things like laying people off, or raising taxes, or privatizing fire, police, um, cutting their workdays to four days instead of work weeks to four days instead of five weeks. Lots of things that are not very tasteful, um, for us to consider, least of all raising taxes. But we'll be back here, and I very much agree with Commissioner Camarillo, every single year, if we don't look long-term. And that includes not just providing health insurance, for example, but making sure that our people are healthy and well so that they don't use their health insurance for disastrous things like complications of diabetes and hypertension that are preventable. And that takes personal responsibility, not just to manage your own personal budget, but to manage your own personal wealth, or health, rather, or wellness. If we don't look long-term and follow the, the, uh, the long-term plan that we, that they, that we have all beautifully designed, um, it's not gonna work. And we're gonna be here every single year talking about raising taxes and struggling and having people with signs and such, um, because no one wants to raise taxes, least of all me. So, personal responsibility does not just involve what you spend at the grocery store. It also involves how you live your life and the choices that you make. Whether or not you care about, uh, your weight, your diabetes, your hypertension. And it's time to stop deferring those things and look at them today, and begin today. Otherwise, in another ten years or fifteen years, we won't be here talking about different lawsuits and such. We'll be talking here about how are we possibly going to afford health insurance for our employees. So, for now, I think we have to think out of the box, I think is a phrase that someone used, and hope that our partner, including the P U B, comes through and helps us through this time because many cities don't have the advantage of a public utilities board, and move forward and hope that we can find a way to cut services as little as possible and inspire all of us to participate in a long-range plan.
I'd like to say something. I totally agree with what she said. Totally, totally agree with what, what everybody's saying is right, but like we're saying, what, what we need to do to, to, to acknowledge and do this budget for this year. The only thing I can see, and I've talked to city manager and staff, what, what can we do? You know, I mean, what, what can we do before we raise taxes? I, I'm the type of person, what can I, where can I cut before we raise taxes? And it's not popular about what I'm gonna say right now, but maybe it's something that needs to be considered. When we had a seventy-five percent, uh, tax rate, then what did we do right after that? We started a G B I C, and we started a B C I C. So we're able to go down to sixty, sixty-eight? What, what if we?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. What if we consider merging G B I C and B C I C together? And instead of getting four million each, put it at? You can have one, you can go down to one entity. Whether the four A or do away with four B or do away with four A, it doesn't matter. You can do that. And, and maybe that's an option we need to look at. No, we, maybe, well, that's a long-term solution, but that's, that's, that's seven-point-something million dollars a year. That goes to these nonprofits. You know, people say the sports park and our taxes, but the sports park has nothing to do with this budget or anything like that because it's paid for by another entity other than the city of Brownsville. So people need to realize that. The sports park isn't causing these budget crunches. It's, it's, it's the economy and everything else that's going along with it. So I just wanna make that pref- perfectly clear. Sports park has nothing to do with what's going on with the city budget. Second, the transfer from P U B to the city, that's something that we've talked to with the city manager. I urge this city commission to talk to each person, maybe you put on a board, or, or maybe I put on a board, 'cause I'm talking to them right now, and they need to hear from us on what exactly the burden has been put on us. I mean, I take it, I take it a heart, what we- I mean, I take it, I take it a heart what we might have to do or what we might not have to do. But before we wanna raise taxes, are we contacting the P U B board members to say, hey, look, this is where we're at? This is, this is, everything's gonna come back on us.
Commissioner, we had this discussion with P U B and they're willing to help, but they wanna see the city also do something. I mean, we had this discussion with P U B meeting last week.
No, I totally agree with that, but they need to be-
They're willing to help.
Great.
They wanna see the city also take action and how it's gonna help itself. Because last year we asked for three million and they said, we said this was a one-time deal. And now we're going back again. Well, it's not gonna be a one-time deal if we keep asking and not doing nothing.
Exactly. But if the city takes the initiative to go, raise the transfer from ten to fifteen percent, that's another, what, three, four million generated?
That can be done again by going to amend the charter and going to the voters. But right now-
No, you don't have to take it to referendum to take, take the transfer from ten to fifteen percent. You don't need to do that. I just got told by city staff that we don't need to do that.
Well, you gotta do all the refinancing, the bonds, it's, it's, it's a very expensive process.
But isn't it worth going through all that instead of raising taxes?
That's fine. But I mean, how are we gonna solve that today here, the budget deficit? Well, it's good. I mean, I'm, what you're, I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm just saying it's not gonna solve our problem right now.
Well, with the three million that we're trying to ask through a grant through P U B with a possible three percent increase, we, we solved the problem, right?
Well, you know, you have an opinion that I disagree with, uh, unless-
But you just said three percent.
No, no, no.
You said three percent and the grant from P U B?
No, no, yeah, yeah. But what I'm saying is, I disagree that, that we could, that we could do it arbitrarily. That's what I'm saying. I'm not disagreeing with you that maybe getting it done. I'm, I'm disagreeing that we can do it arbitrarily without going through a charter amendment and refinancing the bonds and, and it's gonna take, you know, it's gonna take a lot of time. That's all I'm saying.
But at least we gotta take the initial step and pass a resolution here to get that ball rolling so we're not there next year. Does that make sense?
I don't have a problem with, with your thinking there. I'm just, you know, what I, what I'm, what I'm looking for is do the math. Do the math. I agree with Imagine Brownsville. I agree with a health, a healthy community, but how's that math gonna change?
Exactly. Well, we just said that. We get the three million from P U B, and if we raise the taxes three cents, then we're there. And, you know, I'm, I'm against-
You're still short. You're still short. You're short. Doing the math. The three cents produces a million and a half. Uh, P U B, he requested city manager two and a half. You're still short?
Well, then, uh, I think one of the problems that we seem to see repeatedly, and I think why there's so much, uh, discussion and there's such a heated debate, is because if you listen to what Mr. Camarillo said, he was looking at accountability within our city government for the monies that are spent. And if we look at Mr. Barretta, and when he comes up here, there seems to be a concern with how are we actually spending the money? And that has to do with confidence in, in us as a group. And one of the, the reasons that they have the rollback rate is so that you don't have to go out for referendum. But at the end of the day, a referendum is a vote of confidence for your city government. And I don't think you get to a point where you could ask for a referendum to raise rates unless the citizens feel comfortable or feel that there would be justifiable use for the monies. And at this point, Pete is saying, let's do this three, three cents. Well, why not do it five cents or six cents and then go out for a referendum? And if you can show that you're gonna put in metrics that are gonna control and they are going to allow for the allocation of funds in the right way, then you're gonna have the monies necessary to fulfill the functions. The city itself has a lot of need. We have city staffers who are non-union, non-civil service who have not had a raise in four years. We have a situation where we have competing Me Too clauses. We have a ci- there are other cities in this state where their unions have said, we're willing to take a cut because we understand that it's affecting the budget and the ability to provide services. And I think the mayor even said it, it was the city of Dallas, where the voters are asking to raise their taxes. That's a different situation. They obviously have confidence that the city is going to use the funds in the appropriate manner. And until we can instill confidence, we're not gonna be in a situation where our voters are going to support a referendum. And we're not gonna be in a situation where the city is going, where Mr. Barretta's gonna say, I don't wanna stitch up my pockets, 'cause somebody's got their hand in it. It becomes a question of services, what's the cost, what's the benefit? One of the things that I thought was kinda strange when, uh, we were looking at P U B, we had voted and there was discussion about taking away fees for people who were late or habitually late. I think that's almost backwards. Why not propose a decrease for people who pay on time and punish the people who pay late? You know, if you're going to give incentives, if you're gonna incentivize, if you wanna increase monies that come in, well, let's reward those who are doing the right thing, and the people who are, at the end of the day, late and habitually late will have late fees. That's normally what happens. And that would also increase, that would also increase the amount of the transfer because P U B would then charge for those services, and the monies that would then come over to the city would be slightly increased. And if you went up five cents, and you did that, and you looked at some other areas of revenue generation where you're rewarding somebody and possibly penalizing somebody else for inappropriate conduct, I think that sets a precedent. We were talking about the, uh, you know, some of the issues as far as recycling. I think that if you do have a cleaner community, you're going to have less staff expense cleaning up after the place. Yes, we've been in a situation where Tech Dot has cut down on road crews. You're having to meet that need at a local basis, and those monies aren't there from Tech Dot. And that's across the board. If we're gonna be providing more services, more services for the county, more services for the state in order to keep our system on par and where we wanna be as a community, then we're gonna have to look at more revenue generation. And new businesses would be a wonderful thing, and yes, businesses are coming in. And we've actually been in a pretty good position based on influx from Mexico, based on some of these other, um, monies that have come into our community, that we're better off than a lot of other places around the state, especially in our housing market. But we can't continually increase the property taxes. We've gotta look for other revenue sources, and if it means we have to have fees, we might have to do that. But in the short term, we can add five cents on the rollback, and we can look at imposing some rates on, or penalties on people who are paying late at P U B, some of these other things, and do it that way. It might not be the most popular thing, but I don't think anybody here is foolish enough to think that the voters would actually pass a referendum. And that has to do with confidence. And until we can get our own house in order, until we can demonstrate that in a way where Mr. Barretta will open up his pockets, we're not gonna be in that situation. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Well, I'm not gonna base the city voters, base Mr. Barrera, Dere and Roman Perez and Lethicasoria. They do not represent the, the citizens as a whole. They, they, they're here opposing every time, anything we do, anything. So, I, I, the community I've talked to, they support the tax rate increase, three cents. I haven't heard anybody go against, go to my Facebook. They're all, uh, 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 supported. Because they know that we have a serious problem. I, I've been hearing just general answers here. Nothing to address the, the shortage. So, what is the consensus here besides, who, are we gonna raise three cents or we're not? If we're not, are we gonna go to the voters and ask for whatever it takes to balance this budget?
There's no vote today.
No, no. But we need to have a direction. We need to have a direction to him. What's he gonna do? If we're not gonna raise taxes, he needs to know, 'cause he's gonna have a shortage.
But we're not supposed to give our consensus right now. We have to come out for a vote.
I will support raising three cents.
We're not supposed to say-
I think I mentioned Triana said five cents.
Yeah, and I will support if you can, the consensus in the commission to put it up to a refer- I'll support that too.
I don't have a problem with that.
So-
Now, we're not a one penny, now we're jumping up to three pennies.
But to do nothing, but to do nothing is not the solution. To do nothing's not the solution.
They have to vote to vote for your, uh, referendum?
Five and you're signed.
Next item? Oh, is this a public hearing?
Do it.
Morning.
Can you put some action to it?
Will it continue?
Continue for September the twentieth. Now, there is gonna be a publication, a notice that I need to publish before the, the meeting. And I am going to publish what we've been publishing all the time, and that's the rollback rate. Is, are you in favor of that or you wanna go back to one, two, three, four? I'll publish, I can continue publishing what I have. Again, you don't, you don't approve this until September twentieth. But there will be an ad for a publication, a notice, the newspaper rather, uh, soon.
I'll support what you're proposing. Not gonna like it, but I'll support that everyone good, Pete.
You can put, you can put that up there.
We'll go ahead and continue with-
To increase all the way to five cents.
Thank you.
From three to five.
So, you wanna continue?
Yes, sir.
We have, can I have a motion?
Continue.
Second.
Second, uh, motion, second, repeating, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eleven.
Item eleven, public hearing action to authorize the acceptance of the fiscal year 2010 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program Award in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars to be divided as previously agreed between the City of Brownsville Police Department and Cameron County. Funding share for the City of Brownsville Police Department being seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, and the share for Cameron County being forty thousand dollars.
Mayor, members of city commission, good evening.
Grant.
Just trying to recollect, uh, what I was gonna say after so many hours.
Everybody's against the grant?
It's a grant.
Anybody here against the grant?
It's a grant, it's a grant, but we would do-
Mr. Barrera, you're against the grant? No, okay.
Several months ago, I came before the commission to, uh, seek authorization to apply and accept a, a grant from the Bureau of Justice in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, which was a disparate allocation between the City of Brownsville and Cameron County. Uh, at that time, we had agreed that, uh, the funding for the City of Brownsville would be seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two, and share for Cameron County would be forty thousand. Uh, that was submitted, uh, to the Department of Justice. They approved that. And in turn, I'm back here, uh, asking the commission for a public hearing as to how to spend that money. Our recommendation is to purchase three cars, uh, with emergency equipment, including radios, mobile data computers, and mobile vision cameras. Uh, definitely the purchase of three vehicles, uh, this amount will probably just cover the purchase of vehicles themselves. Uh, but I would be, uh, uh, I would be, uh, putting forfeiture funds up to, uh, fully equip those vehicles. But this, you know, we need a public hearing. Uh, we do need input from the commission and we do need input from the, from the community. Uh, and that's my recommendation.
Okay. It's a public hearing. Anybody opposing his recommendation?
I'm not opposing it. That's what I'm saying. I wonder if they really need those three vehicles? Are they just the money there? We might as well spend it. I don't know.
Well, if we don't take it, somebody else will. We better take it.
The, the need is there. I mean, 'cause I'm looking at cutting back some of our fleet that's old, that's from two thousand five and two thousand six. Uh, and, uh, those are high maintenance costs, so definitely the need is there.
Will it close?
Second.
Motion to close, uh, by Commissioner Hackettson, second, Triana, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Seventh item.
Will it approve, second?
You know, motion approved, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
This is the public comment period. We have, uh-